Say first?
No, I just appreciate everybody being here. A really important part of this community is the relationship we have with some of our partner organizations like those we'll hear from tonight. And of course, we always want to give them sort of a version of the same opportunity that departments have to the manager because ultimately so much of their operating dollars come from this body. So, thank you, Mayor Burtam.
Okay, and this is not a regular, regular meeting, so we, quorum is not essential.
That's right.
All right, so if we can go ahead on, should we take roll still or call, or is that okay?
Well, we, we can go ahead and call roll for formality's sake, so.
For formality's sake?
Commissioner, Commissioner Davenport.
Here.
Commissioner Link.
Here.
Commissioner Wright.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Hool.
Here.
Commissioner Culpepper.
Here.
Commissioner Myers.
Here.
Commissioner Thornton.
Here.
And Commissioner Hamby.
You'll be well.
All right, well, we do have a quorum, so we're glad everybody is here tonight.
We have a quorum, we could do, we could do some things. And again, we're going to go ahead on and get started, and the first batter up is Advantage. And I see they're already positioned, and we're going to turn it over to you, Evan, and your support team.
Thank you, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Thank you, Commissioner Thornton. So, and thank you guys for the opportunity, we really appreciate. We're looking at this as, you know, basically a chance to educate, inform. You guys have, you know, as I've stated in the past, have some very, you know, difficult decisions at times, and the more informed, the better informed you are at making some of those decisions, I think the better for the community. So, I'm here, I, I'm with Advantage Behavioral Health Systems. My position is Director of Housing and Development, and I've got Dr. Shannon Kelly here. She is our Chief Clinical Officer, and basically oversees all clinical operations across all facets of our organization. Is that, is that, is that good?
Yeah, you got it.
Okay, cool. And so, you know, we put together sort of a brief little PowerPoint to help guide the conversation. And so, we, we put this together, and this is one of those opportunities to, really just to reinforce, because, you know, Advantage can be somewhat complicated, especially for someone who doesn't work in our field. And so, and I think we only have, Commissioner Thornton is, what, 10 minutes, I guess? I can keep you guys here until about midnight tonight, if you like.
Actually, you got 15.
I have 15 minutes?
And then about five minutes of questions.
Yeah, because there's going to be some questions in there, and, and next batter is going to be at 5:20.
Okay, okay. Well, I, I do not want to get Eve Anthony upset with us, so I will. Basically, and just a, you know, kind of a, a quick rundown, you know, we are, you know, what is known across the state as the Community Service Board. This is a unique setup for the state of Georgia. I want to say that there's three, maybe four other states in the country that have this setup, but this is a framework. We were, this organization was established by state legislation in 1995, and again in 2000, as a community services board. We are a quasi-governmental, state-contracted entity of the state. There are some redundancies in there, but basically, we are part of the safety net provider network. And we contract with the state to basically provide services to individuals with behavioral health, substance abuse concerns, and developmental disabilities. Being the safety net provider, we work and we are, you know, in many cases, the last bastion. We are a second, third, fourth, fifth, 10-chance organization, work with individuals with severe and persistent mental illness, co-occurring substance use disorders, developmental disabilities. And what is very important, and, you know, one of the things that I would love to really sort of hammer down with you guys, is we are not a mental health service organization in as much as we are an organization that provides services to these individuals that come to us with a multitude of barriers to stability. Those can range from lack of social supports, poor education opportunities, poor employment, lack of stable housing, all kinds of things. And so, we have a very robust setup of services across the 10 county region that we serve. As you guys can see, you know, we're based in Athens Clark County. This is sort of an overview of the number of people we serve by calendar year in 2023.
It's fiscal year.
Oh, in fiscal year. Our fiscal year runs from July to June, and so that is a, sort of a snapshot of the individuals. You can see Clark and Walton are larger, you know, larger programs, or larger counties served. And, you know, basically, we have, you know, clinics in some of our outlying counties, particularly Albert, Jackson, Barrow, Walton, and Clark, as well as Green, or, yeah, as, as well as Green County. We are, you know, in the process of, you know, looking and exploring on opportunities to expand in some of our rural counties, setting up facilities, and those are largely based on what funding opportunities might come our way across the state and federal resources that we tend to, to look after. This is sort of an overview, sort of a, I would say, an illustration of the comprehensiveness of our services. Again, to, you know, sort of reiterate, we have basically nine service lines divided up if you, when you think of Advantage. And those range from addictive disease supports, mental health supports, crisis management, youth programs, specialty programs, integrated health programs, housing and homeless programs, so on and so forth. Again, to, you know, sort of talk about the individuals that come through our doors, not, I would say 95 to 99% of those individuals fall below federal poverty guidelines. A great majority of those guys have no insurance or are uninsured. And so therefore, we contract with the Georgia State Government, Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities, to help us account for services for individuals who cannot pay and who cannot access these types of services anywhere else. We go through processes that Shannon, if asked, can, you know, dive into a little bit more succinctly, as far as intake and assessment screening, to work with the individuals, developing individualized treatment plans that target what they want to do, how they want to find a level of stability, be that in their social, family, community, housing-type network, service network. So, it's a very robust and comprehensive space that we have to basically go in. We are one of 22 organizations across the state that does this and cover this, and we're designated by regional jurisdictions to develop, you know, a type of response to individuals that have no other means of support. There is a huge amount of coordination and communication across, at the state level, as well as across the other community service boards in the state of Georgia, where we are really trying to leverage supports and find where individuals might need. In some cases, we do transition and work with individuals so that they can get back to where their communities are, or their strongest social support networks are. And all that frankly is driven by a person-centered approach to care, finding out what it is that the individual needs and how we might be able to guide and work through that. So, a big part of our process is employing the different levels, the clinicians, the nurses, the doctors, the para pros, the peers that live with, with lived experience, case managers, housing support specialists, all of those individuals that specialize in certain areas and avenues, to make sure that we can address the needs of the individuals as they present. You know, if that's housing, if that's stay programs, if that's addiction, if it's intensive residential, whatever it might be, that's what we are here for, and that's what we do as the safety net provider. I think, yeah, and I'm going to hand it over to Shannon really quickly, and she can kind of go through some of the specifics around our services and demographics.
Good evening. So, Evan mentioned, showed you on the first slide, that a good majority of our clients come from Clark County. So, this is the demographics. About 33% of the clients that we serve are residents of Clark County, and this is the demographic breakdown. You can see that we serve across the lifespan, across race and gender categories. We have a, also a good diversity of staff that mirrors the clients that we serve. This shows you the mental health diagnoses. So, 85% of our clients have one of these mental health diagnoses as primary. So, you'll see that the vast majority of folks are, are dealing with a mood disorder, may that be depression or bipolar. And then the next biggest chunk are our folks that are struggling with schizoaffective or schizophrenia, and a smaller number with generalized anxiety disorder, ADHD. This is our substance use diagnosis breakdown. I should say that, that there are a lot of folks that we see who are struggling with multiple substance use disorders. So, some folks represented in this slide may have both an alcohol use disorder or an opioid use disorder, but you can see that alcohol, opioid stimulants are the biggest issues that our folks from Clark County are dealing with. And I will tell you that we are seeing the overdoses come through. We're doing overdose reversals pretty regularly at our facility. This is the last slide I want you guys to take a good look at. We want to make sure that the services that we provide help people get better, so we track that. When someone walks in the door, we do a standardized assessment to see where they are, and then at, over the course of their treatment, we measure repeatedly to see that those numbers are coming down. These, these assessments, DSM-5, PHQ-9, PSC-17, and the audit are measuring general behavioral health symptoms, as well as addiction in both youth and adults. We've been doing this measurement since 2022, and consistently, when someone comes in to our care, over time, they get better. And I think I'm going to hand it over to Evan again to talk about our economic impact.
And before I get into that, I think one of the things that I would like to articulate to you guys is part of who we are and what we do, and, you know, us being sort of a, an entity of the state, the accreditation, the monitoring, and the oversight that we go through in order to ensure that the services we are providing are quality. The, the programs that we are running utilizing taxpayer dollars, federal dollars, are done so in compliance with all the federal guidelines and state guidelines. It's sort of a, an internal joke over at Advantage that we're monitored weekly, but there's, that's almost true. There is a different funder that's out there that's looking at the quality of our programs, the way that we're operating those programs. And being a, you know, an entity of the state quasi-governmental, we have to go through processes that, you know, accredit our services. And basically, enable us to guarantee that the services and the quality that we're doing are evidence-based, and held to a level of fidelity and adherence to those quality guidelines. That basically drives the positive outcomes that we do. So, it's things like, you know, there's an organization called CARF, which is the Center for Accreditation of Rehabilitation Facilities. We just recently received another three-year accreditation, which validates and verifies the services that we deliver. It's a very comprehensive review of all facets of our program and operations, and it's a huge deal that we plan basically three years in order to get ready for it every three years. We also just finished approval of our ASO review, I think it was two weeks ago or last week, where we received full accreditation and another annual review there. Typically, organizations that don't do well, they get six-month reviews, so we got another year, which basically means that we are doing what we're supposed to do with the funds that we have allowed. And to that point, is this, oh, shoot, sorry. This is a little graphic, I thought it was interesting to kind of look at what we are as an organization in order to meet the needs of the individuals that we provide services to. Again, you know, I sort of referenced the scope and the range of needs of individuals coming to us. In order to be a robust, comprehensive, safety net response-type provider, we have to partner with and incorporate a large variety of options and programs, and a big part of what that is, is garnering, because there's only so much money to go around locally, is garnering additional federal funds. And so, this sort of speaks to that and where we go, and this particular amount is what goes into Athens Clark County. And if you think about it from an economic development standpoint, these are federal and state dollars that are going into the local economy, either through the employment of, it says there, over 100 employees who reside in Athens Clark County. The actual specific number is 155 Athens residents who are employed by Advantage Behavioral Health Systems. And so, if you think about that from an economic development impact, these are individuals that are paying rent, purchasing things in the grocery store, going downtown, that kind of thing, and driving, further driving the economic engine that is Athens. And then there's another $5 million that basically goes towards what we call direct service supports for our client populations, and those are things like paying rent utilities, things like hotel stays, short-term hotel stays, or other vital items in order to encourage and promote that person's ability to eventually live stably and independently outside of any kind of support that we might be able to provide. And so, and this is the last slide, which I'm at 19 minutes after 5, Commissioner Thornton, so. And basically, this is our request, and what we, you know, this was a 10% request increase from last year, and, you know, we've received level funding from that since before COVID in 2019. So, we just thought, you know, why not? If, you know, it never hurts to ask, I guess. But we figured we would ask for a 10%, just to, you know, help address the ongoing, I think everybody here is fully aware of the rising prices and pretty much everything associated with living in this country. And that's not limited to groceries, employee salaries, rent, utilities, et cetera, et cetera. So, that's where we stand, and with that, I will end and open up questions. Before I do that, I did want to extend yet another invite to some of you guys who haven't been, or some of you guys who have, to come and tour, to meet some of our folks. Again, you know, the 155 employees for, that work for Advantage are the heart and soul of the services that we provide, and there is hundreds, nay, thousands of successes that we get to contribute and be a part of in regards to the services that we provide. And sometimes, people in your position don't always get to see some of those things, so we would love an opportunity to get into some of those details, and so that you can better understand the range of programs that we do provide. So, with that, I'll be quiet, and we can answer any questions that you guys might have.
Well, we did start it a little bit late, so we'll give you actually a few minutes. Any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you. You made, in one of your slides, you talked about outside regions. Tell me a little bit about what that means when you talk about outside the region.
So, that slide, that's the very first one of the counties. There are, so you can see on this map where we have centers.
Right.
So, some of, most of the outside region is coming through our crisis center, which is a regional emergency receiving facility. So, we have to accept within the region, but sometimes we also accept from outside of the region, individuals who need a crisis stabilization bed. We kind of border at the north some of the counties that are served by another CSB, so if clients live closer in Jackson or Albert County than they do to the facility that the other CSB runs up there, they might come, receive services from us.
And my second question, I thought I, I brought it up last year, do we know what percentage the other counties provide to Advantage for budgeting or anything, what they provide, what percentage? And you may not have it now, but it's something that we might can get later on if we don't have it. I'd like to know what these, at least surrounding counties are providing.
So, I actually pulled that data this morning and left it on my desk. What I can tell you is that the total from the other counties exceeds what we're asking for for Clark County, and, but it does vary by county. So, the, the next under is 175,000, and then it goes to 92, and then it's down from there, but I can, we can absolutely send you that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Davenport?
I would love a tour.
Do I just contact one of you guys?
I have been trying to hunt you down.
Oh, wow.
To get you in, so thank you for saying that publicly, yes, for your board, and I will absolutely follow up with that.
I'd be interested to.
Wonderful. I've sent you an email too, Commissioner Link.
My daytime schedule's a little crazy, so.
I love it, thank you. We will, we will, I will follow up both of you guys.
The, the crisis response, do you talk a little bit about that, how that working? I think last year it became fully staffed, and how's that going?
It's going well. It's still pretty new, so I, they started, they finally got their walkies and were able to be dispatched. It's only been, I think, less than six months, and so the call volume is picking up. They get about half of their calls now from dispatch, and the rest are referrals either from co-response or from street outreach. In April, they had 23 calls for the month, and the vast majority of those were able to be resolved within an hour, but about 38% of them were over an hour that it takes them to sort of handle and resolve the crisis. I do think that they are, they're starting to pick up, so I think as they have had more calls, the officers are feeling comfortable calling them out when they have a situation where I would be able to help. Those 23 calls for, or encounters for April, I will say, also includes follow-up. So, when they interact with someone on the street and bring them into our care, they also do a next follow-up and transport them to the appointment, do some hand-holding to make sure that they get engaged and stay in care and don't end up back.
Final question, have y'all broke ground yet? I've not been out there, okay. All right, thank you.
We are hopeful for the fall, late fall of this year.
Commissioner Myers, and then Commissioner Hool.
The, the program that Commissioner Davenport was referring to, the, what's the name of that program?
Crisis Response?
Yeah, the Alternative Response. Is that funding in addition to this 180,000, your request?
It's separate, I believe it's in the police budget.
And I was spending a lot of time trying to find this document while you were talking, so I apologize if I missed this, but this 180,000 is just, it's not earmarked, it's going into your general budget?
It gets distributed across the service programs in Clark County.
Okay, so, I just did the math on that, this is like one, I don't even know if it's 1%, it's like, not a lot, 1, 100% of your budget? This is just like a little tiny, tiny bit of your budget, and most of it's federal, and then there's state money. And is the state money from our state taxes, or is that funneled from the federal government as well?
It's both.
Okay. But so, this is just a tiny little drop in the bucket.
Commissioner Hool?
Thank you, Mayor Burtam. Yeah, I was glad to see the street outreach program and the alternative response team and the mayor's proposed budget here. If y'all are looking, colleagues, the street outreach program is with HCD on page C57, and the alternative response team under ACCPD on C104. But my question for y'all, the difference of 18,020, I just wanted, you know, this is a budget hearing, so if you wanted to elaborate a bit on what difference that would make if it were to be added in versus not? Because right now, I see the, the mayor's recommended, mayor's recommendation is to keep it even, so, you know, what's the, what exactly would that be going toward? What difference would that make?
So, the, we are a large organization, and when you think of, you know, the, the millions of dollars there, it seems like, you know, oh, this is such a insignificant part. We operate at basically a 1% operating margin. We are as nonprofit as you get, so there is no room for any kind of error, basically. And our CFO, let me call him, raise your hand, that's our new chief financial officer, you guys hopefully will get to know him soon. He has the very arduous task of us creating a budget that is balanced every year, because the funds that we get do not cover the expenses that we incur, given the nature of the populations that we serve. So, the amount of funds that we get from you guys, how do I put this, allows us a little bit of flexibility across certain programs to be able to provide a different, higher-level, more specific, client-centered, person-centered level of service. So, it does make a difference when we're talking about client-level outcomes and meeting the persons where they are, given the varied needs that they have. I hope that answers your question.
Anybody else?
What, real easy one, was there an increase last year? What was, did you guys ask for an increase last year, and we didn't? Did you ask for the 10% more last year as well?
No, we did not. We asked for level funding last year.
Okay, thank you. So, we have two years of inflation. Take a recovery, right.
Okay. With that, we're going to thank you, and, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. As they're taking, they're exiting, we're going to ask the Athens Community Council on Aging. Okay, ladies, all right. We turn it over to you.
Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. It's very nice to see you all. My name is Eve Anthony. I'm the president and CEO of the Athens Community Council on Aging. With me tonight is Erin Beasley. Erin is our VP Director of Operations, and then Seth Robinson is behind us. He is our CPA also joining us. So, to get right to our ask this year, for fiscal year FY '25, we are asking for $392,300 in support. This includes $347,300 in personnel. This includes three hundred and forty-seven thousand, three hundred dollars in personnel expenses, and then forty-five thousand dollars to support the purchase of a van for our transportation program. This is an increased ask of fifty thousand dollars, and that ask, twenty thousand of that is to fund ten older adults who are on our Meals on Wheels waiting list. We continuously have a waiting list for Meals on Wheels of between forty to a hundred Athens-Clark seniors who are waiting for meals. Um, this, this would allow us, like I said, to provide services for ten additional seniors. And they were asking for thirty K for an additional dollars in transportation. That is a slight increase in service levels, but in reality, it's to help us supplement, um, the cost of providing that transportation. Our, our state funders provide nine dollars and fifty-five cents for a transportation trip. It costs us nineteen dollars and fifty-one cents to provide that transportation. Last year, the funding that you all gave to us was incredibly critical because, um, for the months of January through April, our state transportation funds were suspended, meaning we did not get paid at all for a transportation program. Um, the reason was that the state had a challenge in drawing down federal funds. So, having your dollars allowed us to continue to provide that transportation without any kind of interruption, so we are incredibly thankful for that.
Could you repeat that figure on the difference between the state funding and the cost?
Um, so, we were reimbursed nine dollars and fifty-five cents for a trip. Our actual cost to provide that trip is nineteen dollars and fifty-one cents. So, what does our request fund? As you all know, Athens Council on Aging provides federally mandated Older Americans Act program. So in nineteen sixty-five, the Federal Older Americans Act was established to provide services for seniors. Um, since nineteen sixty-seven, A C C A has been providing those services. Um, and then in nineteen ninety, we partnered with Athens-Clark County for a very successful partnership, um, to provide those senior services. So, those mandated programs include the Senior Center, which we've rebranded as the Center for Active Living. Those are our nutrition programs, Meals on Wheels, and our community dining program through our Senior Center, and then also door-through-door transportation. So our transportation provides rides to critical appointments such as grocery store, doctors' offices, pharmacy, and then to our center. Ninety-seven percent of the people who participate in those mandated programs are Athens-Clark County residents. In addition to, um, those funds also provide matching dollars for some of our other programs like our Adult Day Health, our grandparents raising grandchildren. So, for example, for every one dollar of Athens-Clark County dollars, that allows us to draw down up to nine dollars in federal and state dollars as well. Um, and then I think it's also important to note that in Athens-Clark County, we are the only nonprofit agency focused on the needs of older adults. And since nineteen sixty-seven, we've provided unduplicated, um, services to, um, the residents of this community. So, um, in F Y twenty, twenty-three, through our fourteen different programs, we serve two thousand one hundred and twenty-seven older citizens of Athens. So this is approximately sixteen percent of the older population here, and that does not include those who have called us for information and referral services, those who may have participated in one of our educational seminars, and then the older adults who volunteer in our programs. So this map is based on your commissioned districts, and it shows where those we serve reside. Um, the houses on this map represent those who have been served through our new program, the Living Well Housing Program. During our time that we were with you all last year, we talked about several new initiatives that we were starting. And although we, we have had a, I mean, to be honest, a challenging year, um, we've had some really unstable state and federal funding sources, we've had construction constraints that have been outside of our control, um, so it's been a little bit challenging to navigate. But, despite these challenges, and is a true reflection of the tenacious way in which we always provide our services, I'm very happy to share with you some of the new things that we're doing for our aging community. Um, so the Live Well Housing Grant, we received four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from Athens-Clark County H C D, um, this year to provide housing counseling, some age-in-place modifications, and then legacy home repairs. In response to many, 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 many calls from local seniors who have been concerned about their ability to find, um, or to continue to afford safe and appropriate housing, age-in-place in their homes, and then also to afford the repairs that they need on their legacy homes. So we launched this Living Well Housing Program, and we're incredibly grateful for the funding that we received that made this possible. Officially, the program was launched in November. We hired a care coordinator who in February passed her HUD certification exam, um, so that allowed her to begin housing counseling. Since February, she's provided counseling to sixty-eight older adults. But the more that people, especially seniors, know about the service, the more demand we've had. So for example, in April last month, we received calls from ninety-seven seniors who asked us for help. A third of those calls were for home repairs, and the others were related to housing issues that I know you all have heard pretty often. That's seeking help for evictions, for vacate notices. That's where they get that notice that says your rent's about to go up. For many of the older adults that we serve, that rent is going up past what their social security income is. And these are older adults who have figured out for years how to live on two hundred dollars a month or something, and then all of a sudden living is, has become impossible. Um, we've also provided home modification and repairs. Um, we've completed six projects, which we're really excited about. That included a new roof, an H V A C system. Um, we also built a ramp for someone who had been isolated in their home for many years, and they finally got a ramp, so that was huge. We have thirty-seven completed applications, and then four projects that were about to get, um, started. Um, we also, um, during COVID, we received calls, um, for two things. Food access was number one. The other was that, um, care partners, as they were recognizing the isolation of those who they were caring for, started to see signs of dementia, and so they were calling for support. Although for years, we've provided our Adult Day Health Center, um, a support group, we've recognized that there are significant gaps in our community for the care of people who are living with Alzheimer's. And so, we launched this dementia resource center with the idea that we will be a one-stop shop for people living with dementia and their care partners. So we'll provide education and training, support, respite, and then opportunities to network with one another, and then also some opportunities to socialize. So combined with our Adult Day Center, this dementia resource center will be an added addition to our community as we continue to see the number of people diagnosed with dementia increase each year. So, earlier this year, what we're very excited about is we applied for and received a large federal demonstration grant. It's a three-year demonstration grant, and that's going to allow us to fully launch, um, this center. And what we know is, we've modeled this on a couple of centers that we, we saw in Phoenix, Arizona. It's a very unique concept, and so we're excited to bring this to our community. And we know that although we haven't officially launched, that it's already working. We received calls from care partners who are navigating, um, this disease. This is an example of a text that I received from a caregiver who is caring for two younger children while she's caring with her mother living with dementia. Um, she called, and really all she needed was an ear on the other end of the phone that was just, what do I do? What are my next steps? How do I prepare for the time that I can no longer take care of my mom? And this was a text I received after she talked to our dementia resource center coordinator.
I just, I just have to give a shout-out to you guys, because that story that I have from a couple of weeks ago was just so touching. I was walking in the back of my neighborhood, doing some knocking on doors, we want to talk about elections, but, you know, I saw some family people outside having a good time. I walked a couple of houses down on the left, I knocked on a door, takes a while, this older African-American man opens the door, and he just looked exhausted. And I talked to him, and it's like, he is at home, taking care of his wife with Alzheimer's, who's on medical, like, you know, like, it's not, it, it doesn't look, sound like it's an early stage. Anyway, I said, you know, I didn't know anything about this program, but I reached out, you know, thinking that I could find something. Eve had the Alzheimer's counselor person hooked up with him within, like, a couple of days. I mean, and, you know, that was just so touching, because he looked so lost, like he'd been doing this, his kids are in Atlanta. So, I mean, there's a lot of us sixty-five and older, so I'm glad you guys are there.
Thank you, Commissioner. We appreciate that. It's, unfortunately, it can be a very lonely disease.
Yeah.
So, we have for many years at the Council on Aging, we've been the hub of social connection and wellbeing for many seasons, or for many seniors. And over the years, one of the reasons that we've been successful is that we continually talk to seniors, and we ask, what are the services that you need now? How do we remain relevant over a fifty-six-year history for seniors? What we know is we've done that very well, but we also know that seniors now, our seniors today, and especially the seniors after the pandemic, what they want and what they need is very different than generations before. Um, so, in partnership with the Fanning Institute, we launched earlier this year a community-wide needs assessment, and we just asked a simple question, what do you need to age well in the Athens community? Um, we conducted, we got about eight hundred survey responses back. We conducted twelve focus groups and interviews, um, with different, um, individuals in the community, and thank you, Commissioner Fisher, for being one of those interviews to help us out with that. And we're very excited, and we plan to with the report that Fanning, um, does, we will, we will make that public, and we'll share that with each of you, because we also know, um, this is something that's important for everyone, and we can't do this alone. We need other community partners, we need other community agencies to help out with this. So, this is information that we will be sharing. And then, lastly, I wanted to give you all an update. Um, as you know, we are located within the North Town, North Downtown Redevelopment Project, and there are no bigger advocates for that project than us at A C C A. I've worked there for twenty-three years, and in my twenty-three years, I have seen the quality of living for the residents of Ethel go down quite a bit. It is going to be wonderful to see that they have a community that offers safe housing for them. But unfortunately, we got caught up in this redevelopment project in June of last year, so almost a year ago, our building was flooded. We are no closer to having a resolution to this than we were the day after our building was flooded. In other words, the partners of the project, the utility companies of the project, have not stepped up to help us rebuild. This is the Athens-Clark County Senior Center, and this is what it looks like today. It's not a functioning space. Typically, we would have fifty to sixty older adults socializing with each other, having community dining lunches together. That's just not going on. So, thank goodness, we, we combined with our Adult Day Health program, realized that that's just not a therapeutic environment for them both. So last month, um, we partnered with First Baptist Church, we welcomed our community diners, um, and they are in the space right next to, um, our daily bread, which has been a wonderful space for them. Unfortunately, that is an added monthly expense. This flooding has already cost us out of pocket about eighty thousand dollars. That is not money that, um, we know that we're going to get recouped anytime soon. That eighty thousand dollars was the money we typically use to provide transportation trips. It's the money we typically use to fund some of those Meals on Wheels people on that waiting list. Unfortunately, instead of going to services, it's going towards this. Um, so I wanted, I felt like it was important for you all to see this update and to ask you to continue. Many of you have been our loudest advocates on this, and we very much appreciate that, and we hope that you can continue to be a voice, um, because like I said, this is your Athens-Clark County Senior Center, and we hope to get this resolved as soon as we can.
Okay, great. I'm looking, oh, Commissioner Davenport?
Several questions. Thank you. I need to increase my monthly contributions. So, going back to the twenty thousand to fund ten adults on Meals on Wheels, in your presentation, you had stated there are currently eighty-one older Clark County residents waiting. But you mentioned that forty, forty needed only funding? Can you, can you go back over the, the funding for the Meals on Wheels?
Yep. So, probably in the proposal that we sent, things have changed a little bit. We were very fortunate that there's a company called Huber that's in, outside of Jackson County. They gave us a fifty thousand dollar, one-time gift donation, which allowed us to pull twenty individuals off that waiting list. Um, so, I asked today, actually, and, and two weeks ago, the waiting list was at forty, it's now back up to fifty-one. So we, we set at fifty-one people on the Meals on Wheels waiting list.
And typically, a waiting list is, these people have been waiting year after year. So like, literally, a hundred, I did the math, a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars will save, will feed a lot of individuals who don't have the capacity of feeding themselves.
It's approximately two thousand five hundred dollars, a little bit more, just depending on what those monthly expenses are to feed a senior for an entire year.
I love the, the, um, your Live Well Housing Grant. That, that's, that's pretty cool.
We love it, too. We are very grateful.
And, the, the mortgage, um, I was reading, um, I made note about mortgage. I, I thought it was county property for some reason.
Oh, our mortgage. Um, no, we own our property. So the, the building that was, or is the Historic Train Depot, or the original space, we own. And then about twelve years ago, the Bentley, which is the Adult Day Center, we built that, so that's where the mortgage is for that building.
Can you get, I'm sorry, just, can you, is there any, are there any programs from the state that can help you with that? Because like, that's a lot of money that can actually go towards your program. Um, I was just thinking, can being a state entity, whatever, that maybe give, are there assistance, assistance out there that can help you with that?
I'm not aware of any assistance to help with the mortgage. We do receive state funds for Meals on Wheels.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Fisher, then Commissioner Lang.
Thank you all for your presentation. Um, Eve, you know, we was in Washington, D.C. back in December. Any movement, um, on those funds that we had talked with the senators about, or was, I know it was tied up initially, when they were trying to do the budget, so any movement on those funds that we might be getting in the future, anything, an update?
We, we have started receiving payment again for our services. So we had that four months that we were providing the services and not being reimbursed, with the state saying it's because they could not draw down block funding from the feds. Um, we spent time with, uh, Senators Ossoff and Warnock, and still continue to communicate with Senator Ossoff's office in regards to that. We really have not gotten a resolution. It's, it's three years of block funding, so according to the feds, the state has not drawn down two years prior of that funding. But, it's hard to be an organization our size where we are to ask the state those questions, so that's why we've asked the senator's office to get involved.
Okay. And my next question, I don't know, and I know I've been, you and I have talked about this a lot. I, I am somewhat, um, disturbed about the flooding that was created by an entity, and nothing's been, it's been done, and the mayor, I'm not sure, and I'm not sure, I don't want to say the instant name that you want me to, but I'm not sure what pressure that can come from the mayor commission to get them to move on this, because, I mean, this is, you know, I've been there, I toured, I've done, you was there, I mean, we did the Meals on Wheels, and, and to me, it's sort of a travesty that they're holding us up, and this is an entity that serves our older community, and not, you know, we're just bumping heads, and I'm not sure what we can do as a commission and mayor to maybe put some pressure on those folks, you know, so I, I don't know.
I, I would often like for telecom partners and others to just recognize that, hey, sometimes this, some of our work crew got involved in an infrastructure project that created some damage, um, they, they've not openly accepted that. However, a, a, as I've contemplated this, and, and I think, you know, Eve is, is in good stead with her comments, I, I'm wondering if there may have to be some legal action.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Com, Ms. Lang?
Does your housing counseling program, um, offer counseling on, um, wills and, and how to properly leave your property to your heirs?
We are working on that. That, that was something that, that was a concern for ours and a priority within this initiative, is because we know, especially within our Meals on Wheels program, that a lot of those homes, it is, it is their biggest asset. on Wheels program, that a lot of those homes, it is, it is their biggest asset. But there is no legal documentation. And we would run into it when we'd walk in. And for example, there'd be a hole in the floor. And we'd try to fix it, but we couldn't get anyone to come in and do anything because they didn't have the legal documentation. So, we have reached out to one of our, one of the state entities who, and the woman who runs this program for us is not here. So, unfortunately, I don't know why it didn't work out with them. But we have a local attorney who has been working with us. And we're very soon going to be able to launch to help with, our housing counselor will be able to do that. It's a long answer, too. Yes, we will be able to, just, we haven't yet.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, that's a huge issue. And I see it happening, having an effect on caregivers, like live-in caregivers who might be children or nieces or whatever, who might not have any rights to the property if that older adult dies and they end up homeless.
Yeah.
Even though they've been caring for them for years. So.
Yeah, absolutely.
There's a lot of issues. Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm gonna look to my right. Commissioner Hall, Call Pepper, or Myers, any comments or questions? Okay, great. Well, we thank you, Ms. Eve, and, excuse me?
You had asked if we had any questions?
Yeah, just in general, if you don't have one, don't try to find one.
This, this might become my mantra for the night for, but you know, when there's a request that's not currently recommended. Is there anything you'd like to add about the difference that would make and what it means to not get it versus get it, the $50,000?
Yeah, thank you. Absolutely. I, I think, again, this year is incredibly critical for us because of this and the added expenses that we have related to this. The hardest thing for us at ACCA, and I imagine every, every nonprofit similar to ours is to say no, especially to say no to something like food. So, that, that additional funding will allow us to provide additional meals for people who are asking, as well as the critical transportation. That's, there is no other option for people who don't have the ability to ride public transport. We are, we are the only option.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Eve.
Thank you all so much. And thank you for your support. We very much appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. We are, there she is. She's ready.
All ready, well.
All ready. We're, we're have, we have Project Safe stepping up. I think that Jeff is gonna get them situated.
Yep.
Thank you again.
Stay in his phone.
Gotta go, gotta go.
Help you get back on schedule. I have a classroom full of graduate students anxiously awaiting my presence to give their final presentations in lieu of an exam this semester. So, I've been texting with the students saying, you know, fingers crossed, but we'll see. Might have to, to hold on for me here. I'm ready if y'all are.
We are ready.
Okay. So, we are Project Safe. We're your domestic violence center. We believe everyone deserves to be safe in their homes, safe in their relationships, quite honestly, safe on the streets. Because what makes people, especially women, unsafe in the streets and unsafe in the hiking trails is the same thing that makes them unsafe at home. Right? It's power and control dynamics. It's toxic masculinity. It is objectification of women. We are working to end domestic violence through crisis intervention, ongoing supportive services, systems change advocacy and prevention and education. What I have given to you is something that I've done before. It's a little something I like to call the difference between what was in your application and what really happened. As the deadline for this application has crept earlier and earlier, I think it's January 3rd now. And it is just no way that we have all of our data for 2023 in our case-worthy system. So, it's not that I'm telling tales. I'm just giving you everything that we've got at the time that we submit this. And so, here you can see what are, the actual data is. So, you see significant increase from what was presented in terms of hotline calls, sheltered clients, a little nudge, our sheltered pets stayed the same, outreach clients significantly higher, and a little nudge in our longer-term housing clients for the year. And then at the bottom, what I've just shown you is, is the trends up. So, if you look at the increase in hotline calls over the last three years, the increase in first-time callers, right, people reaching out to us for the very first time. And then look at that outreach number. And if you do the math on 2024, on the, the first quarter, we're just on pace to have an extremely high number of outreach clients. Those are the folks we serve through the Family Protection Center. And I always like to remind folks, that was the second family justice center in the United States that was SPLOST-funded here in Athens, the first, of course, in Georgia, and one of just a couple. So, we are asking for a $9,000 increase for a very small amount of money compared to what you've been listening to. We, we currently get, we were at level funding last year, $31,000. We're asking for $40,000. And we are funded out of the 5% criminal fines and fees, right? So, that is a very particular pool of funds. It's not our tax dollars at work. The other recipients of that are the district attorney and solicitor general's office. So, this is the pool that we, we ask for out of this. Why are we asking for $9,000 more? Well, I've been talking to you in, in recent years about our efforts to increase wages. We, we've been on a steady march to get our lowest hourly rate up to $15 an hour. We are poised to do that July 1. But with the number of part-time workers that we have doing like weekend work at night, because we are a 24/7 organization, it costs us just shy of $7,000 to raise a dollar. All right? So, folks are at $14 an hour now. So, we, we just shy of $7,000 to get that nudge up to a dollar. That doesn't even include our thrift store associates, but those are paid out of our thrift store proceeds. So, that's a, a separate issue. So, this money funds part of a legal advocate. It's been funding a decreasing part of that legal advocate. Because we've raised wages, the funding has stayed the same. So, we're just trying to, to nudge up or not fall back further in the cost of that, free up some of the general funds so that we can spread that around and get that lowest entry wage up, which is what we're trying to do and why this is important. I have written a lot of applications to the county this year. We've been flying ARPA applications at you, and we can't wait to hear your final vote on those. But I feel like I've written about a dissertation on what we're doing and some of the highlights. But I don't know that you all get to see the detail in that. And so, I do want to hit a few highlights of the work that we're doing because it's really exciting and, and impactful. Those outreach numbers, why are they going up so much? Well, we have been working on a high-risk team with our Clark County law enforcement. We have long, long reviewed police reports and reached out to the victims named in those reports. We've been doing that since we've had a Family Protection Center. But now, we are doing extra lethality assessment and on the cases that we find high risk on, we are not just sending a letter or making a phone call. We're going out on scene. We're going out in person and connecting with these folks. Seems counterintuitive. The more complex, the more dangerous your experience with intimate partner violence is, the less likely you are to engage in help or participate in prosecution. So, what we find when we go out on scene and actually talk to people, they get a name, they get a face, they build some rapport, and then starts this very slow process of trust-building, of talking, of reassuring them that we are on their side, no matter what they choose to do. We have no agenda but their support and their safety. What the research says on this is when someone has someone in their court with no agenda, an advocate not connected to criminal justice, the benefit is the person's more likely to participate in the criminal justice process. But that's not our purpose, but it is the ancillary benefit. What we're able to do is connect a lot of those folks to service. And even when they don't want services, with that trust-building, we are able to get honest information from them about what is going on. And then we are able to work from that honest information rather than from what they tell everyone, which is what they think others want to hear. So, for example, we're working with a young woman, a guy's about to get out on bond. It's a very dangerous situation. And they're separated. And she's telling folks they're separated. Never in her life wants them to be separated. But she really trusts our advocate who asked her, you know, what are you gonna do when he gets out and shows up on your doorstep? And she said, just between you and me, I'm probably gonna let him in. And she said, our advocate, okay, let's plan for that. Let's plan how we navigate those conversations. Let's plan how we navigate him being in your home. Let's plan how we reduce the potential for risk and harm in those situations. So, we're able to plan for things that are really going on in people's lives because of this process. It is painstaking. It is time-consuming, and it is so worthwhile. And we're the only folks doing this. And that's the other thing I really want to leave you with. We're, we're proud of so much of what we're doing at Project Safe. We had a bumper year with our text line, a record number of text line conversations with teens. We had our largest-ever group in superhero summer camp for child witnesses last summer, and we're gearing up for next summer. We're not a faith-based organization, but we're a values-driven organization. And we do what we think is morally right. And that puts us almost always in a place of doing things that no one else is doing. We're the only shelter in town, the only domestic violence shelter, taking unaccompanied minors because those folks need a place to go that's safe. The only shelter that takes in pets along with the people, right? We, we're the only shelter doing this high-risk stuff, still the only one doing the, the proactive contact. And we like being in that space. We like leading the way. And we feel like it's the right thing to do for our community. So, in the spirit of being brief, I will stop there. But if you have any questions, I'll gladly take them.
Okay. I'm gonna start on this side this time. Commissioner Myers?
Yeah. On that, the proactive, what was the timeline you said you, you have for reaching out?
Well, so, what I talked about was when we started, which was back at the beginning of the Family Protection Center, was when we started doing that. But we get, and we do this in four counties, by the way. But in, in Clark County, we get the police reports pretty quickly. And so, we, we reach out as quickly as we can. It takes some time to do the lethality analysis. We're cross-checking our database. We're cross-checking clerk's office records, other things like that to, to figure out what's going on. Because we're, we're not just going by the obvious, how severe was the crime. We're looking at other markers that indicate lethality. And so, that takes a little bit longer. And then got to figure out, you know, how and when it's safe to, to go out.
I, I just want to comment, as you're saying that, many of us, and we're talking a lot about gang prevention and violence prevention. And at a, at a meeting, some of us were out, one of your staff came and talked about the, the text line, right, for you.
Yes, yes, are you.
As an example there. But I can't help thinking that another thing that was talked about was violence interrupters who are going out and building these relationships, not associated with, you know, criminal justice system like that. And it sounds to me like it's a very similar model of going in preemptively, building trust, and seeing where people are at.
Right.
So, I appreciate that. I mean, I'm seeing just connections here.
There's a lot of folks that have very compelling reasons why they don't want to be involved with police and court system. They still want to be safe. I will say, Chief Joseph Lumpkin always used to say, domestic violence is the incubator of all other crime. And if we, Athens Well-Being Project, some years ago, actually did an overlay of school discipline reports and domestic violence calls the police. And the, the school district overlap was identical. The only difference was just the order of like the top three schools. But it was, it was identical. We were seeing this. We have an ARPA application over at Boys and Girls Club that's a really cool partnership with League of Step. If you, if you know our events, you know, we do a Step event every year. And we also often have Step as an exhibition at Dancing with the Athens Stars. But doing work twice a week for the entire summer and school year with all the League of Step kids on healthy relationships.
Yeah.
As part of that program. And we're really excited about the ability to, to really dive deep. But it, part of it is this community building of support for kids in their own relationships or what their families are involved in.
Commissioner Hall?
Thank you. And thank you, Joan, for the presentation. It's great. Very clear where the increase is going. This is probably a question for finance staff. Where in the budget, if anywhere, is the 5% crime victims fund broken out? I mean, if I go to page, what is it? E...7, I guess it is. You know, I can see the, the listing for the, the budget generally. And it shows where, there's special programs fund, sorry. So, that's page E17. And I can see the other agencies line clearly shows like that's, that's reflecting this. But do we have anywhere in here, like what that total, that 5% money that we're getting, like how much that's gone up in total or down in total?
We don't get that specific. It's part of the fine revenue that's listed.
Okay.
In that fund. But there's several other fines within that.
And just so the public may not hear, I know RPIO would want me to do this. It's, it's reflected in the, in the fines revenue initially.
I'd be interested in...
But as, as Director Pretty alluded to, there are only certain things you can use those for. And this is one of those. And that's why it, it has limited use. So, it's been paired up with this eligible use for years now.
Indeed, yeah. But it's, but this eligible use, we're only using a portion of that for this use, right? So, I guess.
I, I don't think there's a great deal in excess of that. Maybe 60,000 a year. We know what comes in. We can, we can get some. Yeah. We can, we can give you some tables in the last few years and that type of thing.
Yeah, that'd be helpful to understand.
Okay.
Just suppose with what you're understanding.
I've never known how big that pie is. I've just known it was sliced two ways until we made application many, many years ago. John Barrow was on the commission, if that gives you any idea of how long it's been since we've been, we've been doing this.
When we say 5% fees, y'all, these are court funds. So, these are add-ons.
Add-ons. And it, it, it's interesting, just in the same way that you all ask about our other funding sources, I will say our Department of Justice funding and our state funders always ask how much we get of this 5% funding from the county. So, they look for that county participation as they're making their choices, too.
Commissioner Link, and then Commissioner Davenport?
Yeah, I think you kind of touched on this with Commissioner Myers. I'm interested in programs out there, prevention programs geared towards young boys. You talk about toxic masculinity and programs that identifying potential violent offenders early on and gearing, giving them help early.
So, we, it, it's funny. I was meeting with Clark County School District folks this morning, actually. We do go into the schools. We go in as often and as long as schools will have us. We, we had sort of a break, right, in the pandemic, and it's been hard to get back in at the level that we were there before. But we do do quite a bit of prevention work. We go as low as fourth and fifth grade on age-appropriate, healthy relationship education. We do middle school and high school stuff. And then our anonymous text line, we're, we're hearing from kids of all, all kinds and all over. So, we, we don't, we don't know who we're talking to unless they, they choose to tell us. But the, we get kids that are struggling with their own behavior, right, as well as, as well as someone else's. But as we're rebuilding relationships with the school district, for example, we had a, someone from one of the high schools call us recently about a freshman and concerned over her and the boy that she's seeing and a lot of controlling behavior, a lot of. And so, our, our youth advocate went to the school, we met with the kid and her, her grandmother. And then we're, we're offering, we'd like to meet with the, with the boy, too, and, and talk to him and see what's going on there and, and see how often we can, we can get with them and, and work on some plans before. and work on some plans before school's out, right? Because with the kids, with summer, you really worry about, about that.
Thank you. Thanks.
Yeah, Commissioner Davenport?
Yes, thank you. I'm always impressed. Every year, like the amount of work, professionalism of Project Safe. If I could win the lottery tomorrow, I'd give you like every penny. You do phenomenal work. Like your 10-minute presentation is a drop in the bucket of the amount of work you do for the people in our community. I know a few, a few women who like, who love you to death.
Thank you.
So thank you for all the work that you do. So ARPA funds, unfortunately, it's going to be expiring. And it's supporting some of your programs. So we see an increase in the FY '26 budget. Do you know the exact amount of funds that you're getting now that's helping programs?
Right, so it's interesting how things go. And our, and our budget isn't going to unfold exactly the way I had projected here. So, you know, you see, you see funds that you thought were going to decline pick back up. We got some increases in Voka and Vawa, and that's excellent news. We are cycling down. We have an ARPA grant, not through y'all, that ends in fall of '25. We have some other funding now that's ending now or has already ended, you know, as of October. Then we have a couple of applications. We have a partner application with y'all for a high-risk advocate that was recommended for funding. We have a homelessness application that was also recommended for full funding with y'all. And then the one through the Boys and Girls Club. So, yes, we're, know that we're looking at some temporary funds here. I always feel like we just never know what's around the corner. And we have a really excellent history of institutionalizing things that were started with temporary money. So I always feel like we are a good bet if we have enough time to work something up, to be able to cobble together those funds. And, you know, if you're really worried about it, you can be in Dancing with the Athens Stars and help us get some of those unrestricted dollars to make up for the difference, right? I think I'm going to call out Dexter Fisher, who I believe may be our next participant.
But the last question, so $7,000 additional is an additional $1 for your part-time employee. So this July, everyone, the part-time be going up to 15.
Correct.
And an additional dollar, $7,000 will be 16.
No, they're going up to 15 because I hope you're going to give us that additional. They are at 14 right now, and they're going to go up to 15.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right.
Okay. All right.
All right, thank you so much.
Are you going to make it?
I might just make it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Okay, next up, the Classic Center.
Anybody here from the Classic Center?
Yes, ma'am.
Increasing prices?
Ah...
Increasing prices?
Right now.
Those are, no, those are room nights, right?
It's got to be more expensive.
You don't have, you don't have to send it to...
It takes you months. Yeah, it takes you, and all of them good. Everything's...
Roll it on the stage.
In the white lady.
I'm just glad that's a seven out of nine.
Have we increased that news?
Not that I know of, but, you know. Have you seen any hotels go up?
Well, it's a condo.
Yeah.
Try them there.
Y'all, why don't we take a, take a break? And let's, let's take a brief, as they're getting technology set up. That way we end early. So if anybody needs to use the restroom, we'd be on it at 6:25.
Okay. Oh, hey Jess. I've been wasting way too much time. So now I did do my screen.
I can come on my own.
No, see, that's gotten bigger. Like that was smaller and then it's something that...
Like, I go to seven.
If you do control minus, that should be good.
I tried that again. Let's try it again today. No, so it's doing that, but it's not doing this. And that's what I can't. I try to look at...
Click on the three dots in the top right of your thing.
I think I got the email.
I didn't get it. I just got it. We have some...
We need that down to...
Again. Well, let's see, if that goes there, let's see, now I can get the text figured out. I totally did not.
Problem.
My text support, I'm set up support for some people. Some people are, I'm much happier now, my whole...
Okay.
Hey, can, did you get an email?
We are waiting on the mayor. Here. Okay. We're going to go ahead and get started again. Jeff is getting us all hooked up. Okay, next up, um, Classic Center, Paul Kramer. Take it away, Paul.
Great. Well, thank you all very much for having us here tonight to go over the budget. Really appreciate that. This presentation, I think you're going to see three major themes kind of coming out. The first is, I think you're going to see some really good numbers, some really good key performance indicators that have occurred, coming out of COVID and bringing us all the way up to date. I think you're also going to see that there are a number of things that you specifically asked the Classic Center to do, and I'm very proud to say that with your encouragement, we have done those things, and you'll see that play out. And then finally, I think strategically, you're going to see how the authority has set ourselves up to actually fulfill the mission and maximize the economic impact through tourism. So hopefully, all of those will play out as we go through. First, I wanted to remind you of what the mission has been, is, and I intend it to be going forward, and that is that we're here to serve this community as a cultural, civic, and social center while maximizing that economic impact. And again, I think as we go through the presentation, you'll see us touch on each one of those words, hopefully, as we go on. First, I'm really kind of amazed to be able to report this to you. You know, the economic impact numbers are not numbers generated by us. There is a third party that sort of looks at the activity of the center and it reports it in, and historically FY19 was our very best year for economic impact, but I'm very proud to report that we are up 171% from FY19. And at the same time, the number of room nights that we are generating by the Classic Center is up 62% from FY19. It's truly unprecedented, as we have never seen that kind of growth historically going back in time. And you could say, well, Paul, those numbers are great that they're up, but wouldn't we see that in your gross revenue? And indeed, we have. In FY22, we were roughly an $11 million a year operation, and at the end of FY23, we were $17 million a year operation. So pretty amazing growth numbers coming out of COVID. I think a lot of that has to do with the fact that people wanted to get back together, they wanted to come to the theater, they wanted to come back and have conventions face-to-face as we move forward. But it isn't just historically. Typically, I say to my board, if we can have 1.6 on the books at the end of one fiscal year going into the next, it's usually a very good average that we would have. Proud to sit here and tell you that our joint sales teams have actually gotten us to 2.7 million going into FY25, and that's currently. So that's a significant increase. And then as we look even further out into FY26, we already have 1.5 million on the books going forward. And I think that's two things happening. One, it's sort of joining the forces of our historic Convention Visitors Bureau and our sales and marketing efforts. Together, we are bringing in new groups that we've never brought in before, and we're obviously booking out further than we ever have before. Very, very good for Athens, Clark County. As you look at this year's budget, you're going to see some new numbers that you haven't seen before, and some of it is a dramatic increase in the investment directly by the authority. 2.2 million in debt service is embedded in this budget for FY2025. There's $500,000 for capital investment back into the facility to keep it looking good going forward. There's 300,000 of development-related legal fees for this entire area coming around. We've invested significantly to get this area ready for redevelopment. And then, one of the things you asked us to do was increase our base wage and bring it up to 1,585 an hour as we open the new arena, and indeed, this budget does that. But it's more than just that. We've also invested heavily back into the community. I've already mentioned the entry-level wage, but I want to remind you that our foundation is giving away $60,000 annually in scholarships and awards. That's both to the artists, the visual artists, the performing artists, and those who really want to excel and grow in hospitality and arts management. We've also invested heavily in what we refer to as the learning lab. You might remember that last year, we raised $5.7 million in a community-wide effort with private sector dollars so that we could literally become a learning lab and partner with our Career Academy. I'm very proud to say that we've just launched a brand-new pathway for the Career Academy. That's event, sports, and music management, and currently, we have 20 students actively onsite working in our learning lab, earning college credit. We're partnering with Athens Technical College, the University of Georgia, and the Career Academy in that effort. We're also investing in the site for redevelopment, something you might not otherwise know, your authority actually paid the $1.2 million to bring the power to the new arena, and they paid that directly out of the authority. The other thing I think we're investing in is strategy. Strategy as we look forward. We are a much bigger organization than what we were once upon a time, and so our authority has divided the segments of the operation up, and we've created vice president areas so that we can better manage today, tomorrow, and in the future. We've elevated our accountant to a chief financial officer, and we've also positioned three individuals to manage each one of the individual buildings. So now, we have a general manager of the Performing Arts Theater, one of the convention center, and one of the arena, and the managers directly under them are all winning awards. These are national awards from national associations, best-in-class throughout the organization, something I'm super proud of. Not only that, but we've aligned ourselves with best-in-class partners. I think it's very important that you understand these partners aren't just the best-in-class, as I've said, but they have stepped forward with real cash dollars to go into the arena in every case, and they are helping us form the policy, the procedures that will carry us forward and really allow us to excel as we move forward. Just a reminder in terms of investment, right? You all know that SPOLOST voted unanimously to move forward with the arena, and that was great because it was all of the community's support, but that was only 22% of the overall cost of the arena. The rest of that were bonds that need to be paid back by the Classic Center Authority and/or the funds that our various partners were able to actually step up and contribute to getting the actual arena built. That's something I would say is very unusual and very significant for your authority to step forward in that way. You also asked us to pay more attention to sustainability, and you might remember, we did an energy performance contract some years ago that has paid great dividends, but now we've gone a step further. Our atrium is lead silver, and our new arena will also be a lead silver program. We have installed already all of the solar panels on the roof of the 58,000-square-foot exhibit hall, and soon, we will be installing them on the brand-new roof of the arena. We will be the largest solar rooftop municipal program in the state of Georgia when we are done, something I am very, very proud of. Beyond that, though, we have made sure that we are offering opportunities to...
Paul, just a quick question on that.
Yes.
So when I say it's true, that I say on the back on the solar panels, and that my assumption is that you all are savvy enough that you wouldn't be doing it if you didn't think it was cost-effective?
Correct. We receive a remarkably great rate from Georgia Power. Georgia Power has been a great partner. We do real-time pricing, and so before we entered that contract, we made sure that this was going to benefit us and be cost-effective at the same time.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay.
We've also done a good bit of community collaboration and engagement and outreach. We're very focused on making sure that our events are affordable for everyone. You might know, we just finished up the Symphony Pops concert where over 1,800 of our patrons came and enjoyed the symphony absolutely free. We offer very low costs on ice skating and hockey that has historically come. We've also probably been the state's leader in the area of hospitality workforce development. We like to say that people can enter our programs really wherever they are. We meet them wherever they are and give them an opportunity to actually have a career in the hospitality industry. And then, over this past year, more than any other time, we have really worked on product development. Many of you, I know, were there for the musical Linen Town, and we're very proud of that collaboration and what that was able to do. The idea was, we would raise the funds necessary to be able to produce the play, and then all ticket revenue could go right back to paying the rent for the Black History Museum going forward, and I'm proud to say that we have accomplished that. We also have the final now on the Georgia Music Collection and the partnership with the university's Special Collections Library, and I think when you see it, you're going to be amazed. It goes all the way around the concourse. I'll remind you, that effort only came true because of the state funding that we went after and were able to get roughly $2.7 million to make that become a reality. And then, the overall entertainment district with our developer working on that each and every day as we go forward. And then, other community benefits, this past year, we did what was called the Banquet of Blessings, where we fed over 1,000 people who needed it the most, and at the same time, handed out sleeping bags, socks, hats, gloves, all of the things that they needed right at the Thanksgiving hour. So whether it's that or the other things that really mean a lot to this community, those fundraisers are happening right at your Classic Center. Now, I'd be remiss if I didn't tell you, if I told you everything was rosy and everything's perfect, there are some headwinds, and I want to talk about those for a brief second. Hotel inventory through COVID has gone down dramatically, went down by 315 rooms, and in addition to that, we know that the Hilton Garden Inn directly across the way is also going to go down for about a year while they go through a property improvement plan. In addition to that, we know of other rooms that may or may not be staying in the market, but collectively, I think that we're probably going to be down about 600 rooms. Now, when you think about that, in addition to everything else that I just told you, where our demand is increasing both because of the arena and the added business coming in, that is a headwind that we need to look at as we move forward. Parking is another one that needs to get resolved, not only for us, but I would say throughout the downtown area. And then, there is infrastructure. We know we want to bring in this $350 million worth of new development, but there are a number of areas that need to be looked at before they can come in and really make this go very quickly. The bridge and stair payback was something we had talked about before, the water retention vault, the traffic improvements. These are all just projections at this point. We are fine-tuning these numbers, but at my calculation, at the 30% that could go back to help the developer move this forward, there still remains a gap in funding to be able to actually get this project underway, and something I think we need to look at and talk about. I'm not prepared to provide an answer to that today, but I know it's out there. The development itself, we have shared before with you, is really something special. Not only is it going to improve housing, give us a unique rail situation, multimodal, sorry, situation, enhance utilities, it'll give us a whole entertainment district and really connect the east side of Athens with downtown in a unique and wonderful way. When all of this is finished, the arena particularly, you're going to see those key performance indicators on the left jump to those areas on the right, and it is a significant increase. And when we say 90 million in economic impact, those are dollars that go right back to the hard-working people that are entrepreneurs in and around our area, and really, it makes a giant difference in our downtown and throughout. So I want to thank you for your support, your suggestions, and for all of your help in getting the arena to come about. I know it'll be a project we'll all be very, very proud of.
Okay. I'm looking around to my left. Commissioners Davenport, Link, or Taylor? Any questions or suggestions? Okay. Commissioner Hall? Any questions or suggestions?
I assume I know the answer to this, but the amount, that 11.5% increase is just a flat... Is the increase based on what's required by the statute, right? There's no...
Based on the hotel tax, yeah.
More or less, yeah. Okay. Is that...
Commissioner Culpepper?
So I was looking at the hotel room, the rooms per night. In 2023, it was 67,000 was the actual projected for 24, 65,000, and it's going to go to 70, but how are we going to do that if we've got, we're losing hotel rooms?
Well, what we're doing is really looking at all the Airbnbs right now. We're having to look at that avenue for the group business coming in, but I'm telling you, Commissioner, it is a struggle right now. We've got groups, the student groups, that are 3,000, 2,000 people coming in, that historically, we've always managed to hold on to those, but right now, with the deficit in supply, we just need to get more hotels built in the area. The business is there, the demand is there, and you can see that as you look at the rates. What's happened, you'll hear in Katie's presentation, rates have gone up in Clark County significantly above what they have in any of our other competitive sets.
Commissioner Meyer? Just a reminder again here, this number that we're looking at is all coming from the hotel motel tax.
Correct.
And it's a set percentage?
Right. There's an intergovernmental agreement between us that says that you're going to give us a set percentage of that hotel tax, and that hotel tax has done nothing but continue to go up.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
All good. Now, we are preparing here from Athens Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I didn't know that's going to happen, based on what I hear, much as I might want it to be have an effect. I don't know.
Katie, thank you for the opportunity... Again, okay. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present. I'm Katie Williams, Director of Visit Athens and also Vice President of Sales, Marketing, and Tourism for the Classic Center. And just as a, you know, want to kind of recap, Visit Athens, what we are charged with is promoting Athens as a destination for tourism to increase that economic impact and quality of life for our community. And when we do this, there's two primary considerations we really look at when we set strategy, and you're going to, I think, hear that and see that as I move through this presentation. But the first is, how can we grow general visitors to our community? Those leisure visitors that come on the weekends, are interested in Athens as a destination. And the second is, how can we increase group business to the community? Before I jump ahead to FY25, I want to recap FY24. We entered this fiscal year with new branding for Visit Athens, and of the four pillars that were outlined and identified as strategies in our strategic plan, we really took FY24, took the opportunity to focus on pillar one, which was to increase Athens, awareness of Athens as a creative destination that happens to be a college town, really leaning into who we are as a creative community. And I'm really proud of the many ways that we amplified Athens by highlighting our local makers, artists, and creatives. We did that through local product collaborations. Hopefully, you've all had a chance to taste the Condor Chocolate Bar, and we have newly released a partnership with Jittery Joe's, and these products not only amplify the brand of Visit Athens, but also of our local makers. We reinstated the event marketing grant that awarded $15,000 to eight special events in Athens with the goal of increasing attendance of overnight visitors for maximum economic impact. And the third way is, we continued our investment with a PR agency, not only to highlight Athens as a destination, but really, the people, the businesses, the makers of our community. One way that I think our PR, one example of this is how our PR agency investment had a direct impact on a local business is with Puma Use. So in 2023, we welcomed Stephanie Burdette as a writer here in Athens. She received an itinerary where she went around to many restaurants and businesses in the community, and Puma Use was included on that itinerary. Burnett happened to be on the James Beard Foundation's voting body, and the James Beard, if you're not familiar, is really a very prestigious award for chefs, and currently, we're very proud that Puma Use chef is a semifinalist for the James Beard Award, really putting him on the national stage. This is just one example of the way that our PR investment has really highlighted on much more than a regional, but a national way for our local businesses. We also wanted to amplify the awareness of Athens by identifying new markets and growing our current markets, and we heavily leaned into data to understand this. Data is at the center of every decision we want to make with marketing so that we can best go into those markets that are going to generate the best ROI for our community. So Arrivalist was our data partner this year, and their data utilizes cell phone data specifically to track overnight visitors in a very scientific way that provides location information. So this data does not give us geographic information on who these visitors are, but rather, it tells us the ZIP codes they're coming from and where they move throughout the community, because we geo-fenced 51 locations in the community as well as every hotel. Some data that I pulled out to share with you tonight, this was not surprising, that 56% of our overnight visitors come from metro Atlanta. We highly suspected and knew this based on our history, but what we didn't know is where the ZIP codes are. There's many ZIP codes in metro Atlanta, and we really wanted to dig in so that we can better target those specific ZIP codes to grow even, to grow those markets. And it was the North Metro Corridor that was showing the greatest ROI on overnight visitors. Other interesting statistics, you can see here, how many of our overnight visitors actually go to the University of Georgia campus, how many of our overnight visitors visit downtown Athens, and then, one statistic that I think just really highlights the Classic Center as an economic engine, but also, the value that our convention, that it has with our convention center being connected to downtown, is that 71% of the overnight visitors at the Classic Center leave the Classic Center and immediately go downtown. That is direct support for those businesses.
Can I use a question on that?
Yes.
On that, back on that, on the, like, the Visit UGA campus and Visit Downtown Athens, is that just, like, you're seeing a little dot and they go on the campus? So if I was visiting and I took a walk around North Campus, would I count as that?
You would. We actually geo-fenced the campus, but then, we also geo-fenced Sanford Stadium, and what we did when we were looking at annual data was, we extracted football weekends so that we weren't getting ZIP codes that were...
Mm-hmm.
I mean, because then you could, it would skew the data to really look at just, if you included football weekends.
And the one about the 71% of overnight visitors at the Classic Center, I mean, you can't sleep at the Classic Center, right?
Right. So the way the data works is, it tracks the cell phone, and there's a lot of qualifiers...
Oh, how they're, like, going to a hotel and back?
Yes. Once the cell phone has been at the geo-location of a hotel for more than eight hours, it's automatically counted as an overnight visitor. So again, using this Arrivalist data, we wanted to grow awareness and lay a foundation in new markets. So we identified markets of opportunity, Greenville-Spartanburg and Savannah, as markets of opportunity to kind of grow awareness and start to build a foundation for visitors for the future, and then continue to perform on our, focus on our top-performing markets. And you can see here, some of the outlets that we placed advertising in. I'm really excited to announce Athens' first-ever live activation to promote Athens, and knowing that both Alpharetta is a top overnight market and that Avalon is a top destination for visitors, both for metro Atlanta, but really, a regional draw as well, it was the perfect location for us to go in and pop up with all of the ways that people can experience Athens. So on May 18th, Athens will be taking over the Avalon Plaza with partners including Jittery Joe's, Condor Chocolates, the State Botanical Garden, the Museum of Art, the Special Collections Library, a local artist who's going to be actually creating a 10-by-8 interactive mural, and two bands. So we are really excited about this event, but it's more than just fun. This event has some very specific KPIs tied to it and some very specific goals. The first is to promote summer travel out of the North Metro area. The second is to grow a database for future marketing. We want to, we know that these ZIP codes are interested in Athens, that they already come here. If we can capture their data, both through email, where we can continue to remarket to them, and then by geo-fencing Avalon that day, we can continue to market to them over time. And then, we will use the Arrivalist data to track these ZIP codes year over year to track growth.
So you're really targeting in, and then you'll have the data afterwards?
Yes. That is the goal.
So I know that last time, I mean, I don't know what you're getting to there, but this, I'm just fascinated by this, that, you know, I know the arts and then also some of the outdoor recreation, so we now have a way of capturing that, whether or not our efforts, like if you made, you know, an arts thing, and you could find some places to geo-cash that you could be able to see if your efforts paid off, or if using Sandy Creek or the Nature Center and the Greenway. Interesting.
So I hope that some of you will, that all of you will join us for this exciting event. The two bands playing, we're really proud to partner with Troy Aubrey to... The two bands playing, we're really proud to partner with Troy Aubrey to bring Hotel Fiction and AD Blanco to this event. And we truly, and the Classic Center will also be joining us, I did not include them in my list, but the Classic Center with the new hockey team will also be present. So we're really proud to bring our partners together to hopefully grow leisure travel in the future. So if all of that was about growing leisure travel visitors, what we're going to talk about now is how we grow that group business. And this team, we encourage, this year, we encouraged our sales team to set really large goals. Our sales team had a very large stretch goal of 100,000 room nights in FY24, and I'm super proud to say that year to date, they've already booked 70,000 future room nights for Athens. This is far greater than they've ever been year to date in the past. We had a goal to book 35% of new bookings to Athens. So these are room nights in groups that have never been to Athens, and again, they've already generated 26,000 new room nights to Athens for future dates. And then our Housing Bureau is a tool called Passkey, and this tool is really important for a couple reasons. One, it is a revenue generator for Visit Athens, but more importantly, is it's a tool that allows meeting planners to provide one link to their attendees. So when we have a group that is utilizing, say, 12 or 13 hotels around the city, these attendees don't have to go through 12 or 13 different booking links to find a room, they can go through Passkey to book their room. And year to date, we've booked 22,000 room nights in the Passkey portal. Historically, with our Housing Bureau, we've done about 10,000 room nights a year, so not only is our attendees growing, which is, but we are also reaching out to more clients to grow our Housing Bureau platform. Trade Shows is one of the key ways that our sales teams are able to go and connect directly with meeting planners and meet with them by appointment face to face. This year, our team will attend 11 trade shows by the end of the year, and I want to highlight the middle picture, which is the American Society of Association Executives. This is a national show that brings the meeting planners for associations across the country, statewide, regional and nationally, together. Typically, this is not a show that we would be able to attend, but this past year, the show was held in Atlanta, and Explore Georgia had an opportunity to bring together the destinations in a Georgia, on a Georgia campus. So we were really pleased to be able to attend, and it provided great ROI. Being in Atlanta, a lot of the meeting planners that did come were more regional based, so Athens was on their, on their list. Most recently, our Arena Sales Manager, just last week, attended Sports ETA in Portland, Oregon, where he met with 23 planners who are interested in bringing their sports tournaments to our new arena. Our sales team has also been identifying ways to extend the economic impact of these shows by going out into the community. So with our Show Your Badge program, it connects local businesses providing special discounts and offers to meeting attendees, and we have gone out further than just downtown to try to connect and extend the economic impact that these attendees have when they're in town. The second thing we did just recently, when we hosted the NCAA Swimming and Diving Tournament in March, was have pop-up banners in all of the hotel lobbies, greeting these guests, making sure they felt welcome in Athens, and also providing an opportunity for them to find out more. What's really neat about these pop-up banners is that top one-third is removable, so actually you can repurpose them with future citywide events like GMEA or TSA that takes place at the Classic Center. But something I want to note about this as well, that references back to what Mr. Kramer said, is that we have an athletic director who is aggressively pursuing these NCAA and SEC tournaments, and it is great for economic impact. They are filling our hotels, shopping downtown, eating our restaurants, but it does become a challenge if we don't coordinate and manage our inventory. And so the Visit Athens sales team is working lockstep with Georgia Athletics to connect and make sure that what events they're booking, the room nights that they need, that we're not overbooking our city and we're managing the calendar appropriately.
I'm just interested in this, this is like a whole new way of thinking about things here in the way you're targeting people, and I'm just thinking of all sorts of opportunities to use this data, but even in terms of the restaurants and sharing the economic, you know, development opportunities for different parts of the county, you know, on the east side, there's, you know, actually, you, one could, in the make-believe world, if you got, you know, Ethiopian restaurant, a Thai restaurant, Italian restaurant, like you could be sort of marketing these alternatives to downtown. Do we do any of that, that we, we highlight different areas? Because, you know, I'm just thinking about this, you know, people will talk a lot about, well, there's not anyone going over here, and our restaurants are closing. So wondering what our Visit Athens does to get people so close, but yet so far.
That's a great point. We do have a lot of content on our website that talks about the different neighborhoods, but I really love your idea about the, kind of, the international experiences that can be had on the east side with those different angles. It's kind of reminds me of like what Beaufort Highway has done in Atlanta. So that's interesting, and I love Preacher Greens, by the way, that just stood out.
Right, right, that could be the southern, that could be the southern part, you know, with the Thai and the Ethiopian.
That's great, thank you. So Mr. Kramer also mentioned that now, Visit Athens and the Classic Center sales and marketing teams have come under one umbrella, and there are so many strategic ways that we can collaborate together to increase awareness and overnight rooms for Athens. But one most recently is by generating awareness and really building excitement for what's to come with the arena. So here you can see a sampling of the ads that are going out both to meeting planners on the right, and then on the left, introducing Athens' newest stage, is our more leisure geared marketing creative. And so this is out right now, and this is a collaboration between Visit Athens and the Classic Center. So looking ahead to our FY25 budget, if FY24 was about pillar number one, one of the four pillars, then FY25 is really where we're going to focus in on pillar number four, which was create a vibrant year-round destination that builds upon our community strengths, attracts new audiences using data, and ultimately generating new overnight visitors. So our budget projections for FY24 look very similar to FY25. As a reminder, we are funded by the hotel motel tax, the portion of the tax that is dedicated for marketing, sales and promotion. In FY25, our hotel tax, roughly 71% will come from the hotels portion of hotel tax, 20% from the short-term rentals hotel tax, and then we also, as I mentioned, Passkey is a revenue generating source. At the time when I prepared this, I had budgeted 150,000 for Passkey. We've already surpassed 150,000 in FY24, so I do expect that number will grow in our FY25 budget.
Would I be correct to extrapolate from that, that with the short-term rentals equalling 40, 400,000 and the hotel motel, that that's like, you know, I don't know if that's 20%, I can't do that math that quickly there, that's less than 20%, but, but that that is, there was a, that that could translate into rooms as well? I mean, do we know what that is? I'm just thinking of our discussions they're having in government operations. And in terms of, of, you know, how many rooms, and is that, as we're looking at things, the need for more hotel space?
Yes, and I can provide, we do have, receive data from AirDNA, which is like a STAR report version for short-term rentals, and so I'd be glad to provide, like, the 2023 recap for AirDNA, so you can get a broader view of how many short-term rentals, what the occupancy is, what the rates are.
Even what the cost is, I find that, I mean, I hear more and more people say this, this is not out of our short-term rental, but about using it as an option for, for traveling, and that it's like, oh, you know, in the beginning, that was a little more cost-effective, now with all the fees, maybe I'll stay in that hotel that's right downtown. So I would just be interested in that as well, in terms of drawing more hotels, you know, into the area, into, that we're looking at developing, or that someone is looking to develop, because we're not in the hotel business.
Well, that sets me right up for this next slide. So as, as Mr. Kramer did mention, just wanted to highlight again the challenges we are facing with our supply and demand. Again, looking back, hotel rooms, roughly 300 closed during COVID. ADR, which is our average daily rate, in 2023, our average daily great, rate grew a whopping 13 and a half percent. This is more than double any of our comp set markets, and this is just showing the demand for our inventory and the price that people are willing to pay for hotels. We do know that in 2024, here shortly, the Hilton Garden Inn is going to close for a full renovation. We're really excited for what this renovation means long-term. It's, it's going to be terrific, but in the short-term, it is going to be very challenging to fill those 100, to find and kind of, but fill 185 rooms that we're already kind of scrambling to find. Short-term rentals are really what is helping us kind of fill that gap right now. Not only are they helping us sustain the current demand, but they're really going to be the only thing that allows us to grow until more hotels come into the market. So they are very important to our local tourism economy, not just from a revenue standpoint, but as a place to accommodate all the visitors coming into our market. With the exponential growth happening on our group business, the new arena that's coming, an athletic director who's bringing SEC and NCAA events, and leisure travel on the rise, it's not just a supply issue, but that it's a supply issue while demand is soaring.
I feel like, do we have any hotels in the pipeline?
Yes, so on July 1, the, the Rivet, I don't know if it's the Rivet House or the Rivet Hotel, Rivet House will open at Southern Mill, that's a 50-room boutique hotel. There is a hotel that is in the pipeline to be built on Alps Road by Mr. Patel, who owns the Fairfield Inn and Suites. That hotel is expected to open in 2027.
Maybe this is getting off topic, but isn't there one over on West Broad too, by Beachhaven?
Coming in. Oh, right, right, I remember, we saw that, because it's a driveway option.
I'm not familiar with that one, those are the only two that I know for sure.
It got approved.
We approved it, I'm not sure.
A while ago.
Yes, and there's other speculative.
Can you let her finish her presentation and hold out questions?
So looking back to FY25, in a couple weeks, our team will be establishing the KPIs for FY25, but we have identified three primary areas of focus. Of course, focusing on growing room nights with new business, as I mentioned, and the arena's really going to allow us to do that. Looking at how we can strategically promote the arena for both group and for leisure visitors, we'll be focused on that. Conference services, that area of our housing services, the Show Your Badge program, our Passkey portal, a meeting planner guide of all of these services. But also included in this is that really important collaboration that needs to happen between the CVB, the Classic Center, UGA Athletics, the special events, making sure that we are accommodating and providing, we're just planning for one another's event so that we can best welcome every visitor to Athens. And then the third is just continuing to use data to drive our marketing decisions. We've invested the past year, we will continue to invest so that we can track year-over-year growth and really see if the places we are investing our marketing is working, and if they are, we'll continue to do that, and if they're not, we'll continue to tailor where we can go and best attract visitors for the greatest ROI. So I want to say, say thank you, it truly is a pleasure to serve both the Classic Center and Visit Athens and all of you, and most importantly, this community. So I really appreciate your time tonight.
There may still be some more questions.
Of course.
The Avalon event, is that all day?
It is, it opens at 11:00 AM, 11 to 5 is the official activation, and there'll be ongoing events throughout that day, and then the bands start at 6 o'clock.
Oh, thank you.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yeah, I just want to say I really love the rebranding.
Thank you.
Definitely feels smara.
Thank you, we're having a lot of fun with it.
Yeah, it's looking great.
Thank you.
On this side of the rail, Commissioner Holm, Commissioner Crawford, and Commissioner Manna.
Thank you.
Thank you all, I appreciate the questions and your time.
Okay, up next, Athens Regional Library System. Are you hot? Are you hot? Are you sick again? If you're sick again, boo.
It's too soon to be sick again.
I don't know, you may not have gotten over it, everybody else is good.
Hi, hi. How are you? Good evening, how are you?
Okay.
Thank you.
We're going to pass it over to Ms. Bale and Associates.
Chairman Kane Russell. Chairman Kane Russell from the Board of Trustees.
Hi. We've got some handouts for you, which are corrected portions of the budget that you already had. And I'll, I'll start by going through our mission and goals, which you've got in the docu, whoops, hello, there it is, which you've got in the document that came, I think, in your folder. The library has completed its three-year strategic plan. The vision remained the same, engaging communities and exceeding expectations. The mission statement is new, we create a welcoming and inclusive environment that empowers individuals and communities by providing resources that encourage discovery, imagination and lifelong learning. And then you'll see the goals there that are from the completed strategic plan, being vital to the community, embracing equity, diversity and inclusion in every aspect of the library, being a vibrant organization essential for the future, and that we learn and grow together to foster a positive and thriving work environment. And if you go to the library, you'll experience it all. On the next page, again, I think you've got this in your, what came originally in your folder, the programs and services, the impact on people in need. The library has hosted over 160 tabling opportunities for local community groups to share with residents who need the social service support. Our social worker, along with UGA interns, has helped over 330 patrons in one-on-one sessions to help them network in the community. The impact on student success, the new, well, relatively new, Public Library Access to Youth Program, which is what the so-called play cards, the free library card for all public school students, and I'll, let me defer to Val just a moment, I know we've got it in Clark County.
Yes.
And we're into Oconee County, so regionally, it's, it's moving around, but more importantly for you all, it's, it's all over Clark County. So we've got 16,706 students enrolled in that program, and it's fine free. The teen program has served over 6,000 after-school, after-school students in FY24. On the next page, you'll see that, excuse me, we continue to provide cultural enrichment, civic opportunities. The Heritage Room at the library, which is a wonderful place to explore, has served over 500 residents this year, and also received a phenomenal grant, an award, rather, for excellence in archival program development by a local history repository or a local government, and that's going to provide some wonderful opportunities for people exploring heritage. We continue our partnership with Everyday Readers, which is a literacy program designed for adults learning to read, and then there's a recently formed English conversation group where people can come and practice the English language. The performance measures that you'll see on the next page, I believe two pages, excuse me, one from the American Library Association and one from the Georgia Public Library Service. The money, the, the amount of money that those serve, or that those cover, has not changed. The reason we gave you a new copy is that there was an Excel spreadsheet list, a problem, and there were some numbers that were simply misprinted, but they were number of offerings, not the amount of money, so that we just wanted to be sure that was clear for you. Then the next sheet, you'll see the justification for the request, and again, we've, we found an error that we corrected just a couple of days ago, and that's why you see an entirely new request, which is less than we asked for in what you got originally, and we hope that makes you smile. In personnel, you'll see that after the budget was submitted, we, that, then we learned that the state health benefits program, which is required, has gone up, and so that's, that's funding that we've got to cover for the 30 full-time staff members, and that amount is $87,000. The teachers' retirement system is going up in its rates from 19.98% to 20.78%, and that again, has to be covered. But that's. that, again, has to be covered, but that's a figure that is less than what you received in your original documents. The $30,000 requested is for additional professional off-duty police folk to be in the library, so we're covered for security whenever the library is open, and that's crucial. There unfortunately have been more events, and, well, I think we all know the situation in Clark County. Then the last one on that page requests a 3% cost of living increase for the staff, and again, that figure is lower than the one that you initially received. We're also requesting a, you'll see it's for $31,822.62, an additional 15-hour-per-week part-time position to help with accounts payable in the business side of the library. So the total personnel request is $227,146.62. Operating expenses, we need to increase the supplies for the custodial folk, and again, it's library usage that pushes that one. We anticipate some, because of increased library usage, that the utilities would be going up about $3,200. And then the meeting rooms, which have been booked for over 517 times during this past year, has got, have got some old equipment and so forth in them, and you'll see that listing, replacing projectors, replacing an AV system, disconnect the shades and blinds for the projector screens, the, all the cables and brackets and all those good things to support that, and then the labor and software to make that happen. So the total operating request increase is $38,295.14. And the total request you'll see there is $265,441.76. And then just one last note, and then we're certainly open to your questions, on the second to the last page of your document, you'll see the amount that the library has generated this year in grant money, and that obviously supports the budget, and that's $123,233. Thank you, and we're open for questions.
Okay. We'll start to my left, Commissioner Davenport.
Thank you for this. On our form, number one, SEC government funding detail, operating expense for FY '24 is 342,300, and the request for FY '25 is 421,037.
I'm sorry, help me, sir. Which page are you on? Oh, there we go.
Number two, Form 2 Financials. Operating expense is going up $78,000. And I thought we put in solar panels. Is that all the, is that for the cleaning supplies, is the library cleaned up?
Well, the numbers that you're looking at on that first page are, you're looking at this request for summary page? Yeah, we have to, we have to change those because of the change that we made in the actual request. So the fiscal year '25 request is not $3,314. But when you look at fiscal year '26, yes, we are supposed to be getting solar. We haven't received it yet, and so we don't know what that impact is going to be. It's our understanding it may not be as much as we originally thought it would be, and also in fiscal year '26, we tried to project the New East Side library. It may not be there in fiscal year '26, but we put it in our projections.
But the FY '25, for like what we're going to vote on in June, there's still a $78,000 increase from FY '24 in operating expenses. I will email, don't worry about it. I'll email it to you.
It's in our, it's in the packet, you know, we could have done the whole thing over, but we didn't. The operating expenses for fiscal year '25, the increase would be $38,295.14, and that's $5,000 because our custodial people have, it's part of their contract that they, that they order the supplies. They keep the library supplied with toilet paper, paper towels, and, you know, soap and things like that, and that cost has just gone up, and it's gone up ever since COVID, and they have not had an increase, so they've been subsidizing that with the money that they have been getting. So the $3,295, we expect, we really just rounded off some of the numbers that were there that we already had. We know that we need IT maintenance and software equipment. All of that has to be increased for '25 because the IT equipment and the software and the things that we have are very old, and that's the, that's part of the meeting room supplies for the three meeting rooms. Those meeting rooms have been in place since the, the technology in those meeting rooms have been in place since the library was added on to. So it's, you know, like 14 or so years old, and it's just not working anymore. We're having a lot of problems with it, and obviously, the patrons who come in and want to use it, they have issues with it as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Allen, did I see your hand? No? Okay, Commissioner Taylor? On this side, Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, I just have a request from, we have this, all of the agencies we're reviewing today in an electronic file, and, you know, I'm just looking at the number of papers I've gotten in the last two days, so I, my request is just that we can update this electronic file, so, because I think it's a little confusing. So that's just something maybe whoever's in charge of making.
We'll be happy to, to update the whole document.
Yeah, and then, then maybe someone at our end could make sure that it gets replaced as well in this packet that we got.
Okay. Commissioner Culpepper?
With the new library coming in, do we know, is it going to be this much to operate?
Well, that's, that's for both libraries. That's, that would be the operation for both libraries. One of the biggest things that we're dealing with, and in your new packets that I gave you, I shared at the very back of them, the state health benefits program, and that is where we're finding the biggest jump in, in our salaries and wages. The state health benefits program, and I'm told that we are not allowed because we're a regional system, we have to stay with the state health benefits program. And so because of that, you can see how it changes the annual total per employee, per full-time employee. In fiscal year '23, we were paying $10,116. By 2027, that's estimated to be almost $19,000, and that is state-mandated. We have no control over that, but that's how, that's how those increases are going to be looking. That's how we're going to be requesting support for the next couple of years.
I think so.
I just want to make sure I'm walking away with the right numbers in my head here. So this is the, this is the new thing.
Yes.
Instead of page F8, right?
Yes.
So it's a, it's a new total request of 265,442, which would bring the total amount increase of that, which would bring the total amount requested to $3,49,164. Is my math correct there?
I think if you go to this, this last budget page that we gave you today, I think it's $265,000.
$3,226,58.
Yeah, I think what's.
Right.
Well, I hope so. I'm just trying to make sure that what's on here matches what.
Okay. So just getting that right, going where Jesse's going on this, so with these numbers, could we line these numbers up with items in this spreadsheet here, right?
Yes.
Yes, and it, but it's also, excuse me. It's also important to notice, note that the final page, the Clark County portion is just that top line of this, of this spreadsheet that you see here, of this budget spreadsheet, because the rest of it, you see, is regional. Okay? Okay? So, because it's a regional system.
And that's how we've been asked to submit it.
Right.
But the variance is 265,441,76.
And I, yeah, I was looking at the wrong part on here.
That's okay.
Did the wrong math.
I did, I did it two days ago.
If we did the math to the, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay. Everybody good?
Thank you very much.
We really appreciate everything that you all do. I hope you appreciate the library and our staff. We have some staff here and some board members. We know that this is a big ask, but most of it is really out of our control with TRS and the state themselves deserving a 3% increase.
Is it all possible?
Yeah. I just want to thank you too.
Thank you.
Yeah, the li, I mean, this library is so vibrant, it's so full of people, the staff are wonderful, it's, those rooms are all, it's so hard to book a room because they're booked up so much.
Yes.
And, you know, Libby gets me to sleep every night.
That's good to hear.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Whew, we're not far behind time, believe it or not, not far. The Western Judicial Circuit Public Dissenters. And there he is.
Here I am. I don't have a presentation. I just got the mayor's recommended budget yesterday, so I really didn't have time to put together a PowerPoint to convince you to ignore his recommendation and fund our, fund us at the amount that we've requested. But I do plan on, thinking about it a lot today and coming here, I do plan on making a very simple one-page sheet to compare the assistant public defender salaries to those of the attorneys in the comparable offices dissent. I'm going to email that to all of y'all before, shortly. So I'm John Donnelly, I'm the Circuit Public Defender here. Good to see y'all again. And, yeah, so you have a sense of what we do. We have a, sort of basically a county function, although we are a state agency. So most of our funding comes from Clark County. We have some from Oconee, and then some from the state, but we, even though, you know, as I say, we're serving county function, but we are in the, under the umbrella of the Georgia Public Defender Council, so we're a state, we're state employees. And the bulk of what I'm asking for as far as an increase is to increase the assistant public defender salaries. There probably is a little bit in there for rent increase, although we have a new landlord now, and I'm trying to try to renegotiate our lease, anyway. But, right, so the salaries, it seems like every year, the goalposts get moved on me, and I'm trying to just get closer to the goalposts, and this year was, you know, not insignificant movement of those goalposts, because, you know, we came before you last year, made my pitch, I think I reminded some of the commissioners who hadn't been here before about the, before the pandemic, two years before the pandemic, we studied, we kept track each year of the initial recommendations that the prosecutors were making in felony cases, and then the outcomes of those cases, and we tried to quantify them, and we were able to show really shocking numbers of hundreds of years in prison that, and more hundreds of years on probation, that our interventions were, were saving people, and we have not been able to do that. I was hoping last year, when I reminded you all about it, that I could have those numbers again this year, but it really is, the criminal courts aren't back to a place where we're getting those kind of consistent recommendations up front. Things are being dealt with, well, anyway. So anyway, I haven't been able to do that, but we're advocating fiercely, we have, we're, have been mostly fully staffed for the last fiscal year. We have one vacancy now. But, yeah, we have a great group of lawyers in the office working very hard at a very, very difficult job, as you can imagine, that it's not, most lawyers don't want to do that kind of work. It's very stressful to feel the weight of the responsibility for, you know, someone's freedom, potential incarceration, you know, in your hands, and relying on your advocacy for them. So it's, it's difficult work. We have been able to, I think, get, get good people and mostly keep them. But, so what has happened then is we are in this weird no-man's-land salary-wise, so we're not county employees, so we don't have that kind of pay scale. We, there are state attorneys have a state pay scale, but obviously, you know, you guys aren't a state entity providing that budget, so I have to get what I can and get it, try to get it, I look at the, what you fund for the assistant district attorneys, the assistant solicitors, and to a lesser extent, the assistant county attorneys, and their salaries, and try to get as close as I can and to those. And we have usually been behind, we are behind now, and that's, I'm, have, have made a request to try to catch us up. What happened this year was they did that, I'm sure some of you may remember, I can't, I'm trying to think of the name of the group that was hired to do the study. They did an attorney, government attorney salary study, and I was included in the data collection, and they interviewed me, but we were not included as being, reaping the benefit of the study, because again, we're not county positions. And so, right after, so I, you know, I made my pitch a year ago, and you all were generous enough to fund at the level that I requested, and then late July, no sooner had the fiscal year started, and then this study happens, and the county attorneys and the other offices got a significant boost in pay, and so, yeah, and again, we're trying to get closer to the goalposts. We're not, what I'm asking for will not, and it's hard to match people's salaries, but I've gone through with, you know, open records requests and got as, as current salary data as I can for the assistant lawyers in those other offices, and tried to compare with the years of service, and that will be in the document, the one page. I'll make it as simple as possible to compare where we're at with, with those lawyers in the other offices. And so that's, you know, what we're trying to do. We, I feel like we have proven to be a stable office and, and have provided consistently high level of service. I think you could ask the judges, you know, people at the courthouse. I'd like to think they would support that, corroborate that statement. We definitely have proven to be fiscally responsible. The finance office can tell you that we, every year, we return the unspent money. If there's been, you know, vacancy for a couple of months or something, I don't look at the end of the fiscal year to try to spend any unused contract money. We return it, and those checks have, you know, been significant usually. We return it, and those checks have, you know, been significant, usually. And by the same token, I don't want to play a game and ask for more than I think we need and hope that there'll be a compromise. And I'm asking for what I legitimately think is fair to, for the years of service and the level of experience that, that some of the people in the office have. And if some of them were to leave with significant experience, and, well, yeah, it's, it's tough to, to replace those kind of people who have relationships with the clients and with the judges and courthouse staff. And I am happy to take any questions.
So, John, just kind of be clear for everybody. They may not have numbers in front of them. Was the total increase you're asking for?
Okay, so.
246,418.
Yeah, 246,418.
I have 2.359 was requested. Last year was 2.112, 112, and then that's, that's the mayor's recommendation, is, is to leave it at the FY24 level. And so, that is, you know, look, according to the, and I'm just getting this off of the recommended budget that came out yes, whenever it came out yesterday or the day before. And it says, and I take this at their word, that it's an 11.7 increase. But I do also notice that in the recommendation for the DA's office, the mayor's budget recommends like over a 40% increase in the salary and benefits, and for the solicitor's office, a 19, a more than 19% increase in salary and benefits. The, I will, also, I looked at the caseloads before coming here. They're up significantly.
Those increases, sir, I'm sorry.
Please. Yeah, there's not a whole lot of detail.
We're trying to understand the math, so is that the result, those percentages you're reading after the personnel get a 4% raise? Is that where that money's coming from?
It doesn't.
Oh. Okay.
I think there's some variance between the filled positions versus the others.
Okay.
But John, you're asking, there's 240,000 dollars.
I can under.
Relative to FY24.
Yeah, I didn't subtract, I didn't do the math, but that sounds right, yes.
Well, I, I bring up, I want to explain the mechanics of that. That, that doesn't necessarily pretend any favoritism, but we have been budgeting it at lower than, lower employment levels, because we've been experiencing that. It didn't make any sense to carry all that money for positions that just weren't going to get filled historically, but we're filling up now, and at such a rate, I think I mentioned this at our, our meeting, that Mr. Donnelly didn't have the, didn't have, he wasn't there. The first 3 million of the new revenue that we're getting is just to pay people that we're hiring now. So, we are budgeting now more closer to full employment, not there yet. That's a liability that we're going to have to overcome if we continue to hire more folks. But that's the big increase, is not, it's just budgeting for more personnel, not raises.
That makes sense.
Those aren't raises or anything like that.
That's not explained in, in here, so thank you for that. But I also hate to get penalized for keeping a full staff, but maybe that's not the way to look at it. Oh.
No, you're good.
Can I ask a question on that, on that point, before we get off of it?
Yes. Do you mind, Commissioner?
Because I'm looking at, like, our ACC Attorney's Office, which has been full-staffed, and the number of positions listed are the same, and that says 47.1% increase. And if I look at the Solicitor General's Office, which I think we've also heard hasn't had the same issues of vacancies as, say, the DA, that shows a 19.6% increase. So, it's, I guess I'm having a hard time understanding how we could attribute that entirely to vacancies if those departments haven't experienced vacancies.
Yeah, I'm not in HR, so I don't know the exact particulars of that, you know, of any, you know, one department. But one thing to keep in mind, the FY24 budget was budgeted, you know, that was before FY24 even started, so they had vacancies at that time. So, that's the number that was set. After that, we've had pay increases just for general employees, plus the Attorney's Office, along with other attorneys, gotten an attorney adjustment. And so, the FY25 base is significantly higher than the FY24 base. They are, I think, fully staffed at this point, but they were not when we set the budget for FY24.
So, if you remember, for FY24, it was unusual, but what we did is we picked a point in time, and it was in the fall, I believe. And whatever filled positions, that's what we budgeted for. And then that slowly has been increasing. And so, this year, that is no longer a viable way to budget, and so we're now trying to put more money in the budget for more folks returning and filling up.
I guess I don't recall that being an issue for the Solicitor General's Office specifically, although I know maybe like the Attorney's Office, they had a new position to fill, but I'd be.
Well, if we want to turn this into, you know, I mean, we can come with specifics on that, but I, I will tell you that there is nothing that is being given to them in terms of favoritism or extra money or extra benefits. It's simply budgeting for more people. That's what it's about.
Okay. But this does, this does account for the increase in their salaries based on that study, which wasn't reflected in the FY24 budget, correct?
Correct.
So, that portion of the point that Mr. Donnelly is making is still relevant here, even if that doesn't account for the entire 20% figure? It does account for a portion of that, correct?
They did, they did get an adjustment, correct?
And, and when they got an adjustment, we didn't make any adjustment for his office. Is that also correct?
They are not, not our employees.
Because they're not our employees?
That's right.
Correct? Okay.
Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, and, and that one pager you're giving us, just in terms of the salary confusion here, if, if you could spell out what you're thinking is the, we've had the salary adjustment plus a, the cost of living, you know, just a regular salary. I mean, I think that would be helpful for me, you know. In the numbers that you're giving submitted, was there a, was there a percentage raise or was there a salary adjustment? And on the, just in the, in that one pager you're getting us.
I will try, I will try to do that. But I, like, I don't know a lot of times what, you know, their, the exact reasoning is behind an increase in, for an assistant DA or an assistant solicitor.
Oh, no, I meant for your office, what the requests are, so that I could say.
Right. I'm just trying to, so I, yeah, I'm just really not even thinking about percentages. I'm just looking at the number of the, the salary for a comparable in terms of what kind of job they're doing and the years of experience, and trying to get my person.
Right.
Closer to that without shocking the budget process.
Right. I just want to see a chart where it says, this is what they're paying, this is what we're suggesting, this is the comparable DA. So, it's just, it's like, one thing. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Sounds great to me. Commissioner.
Thank you. Just focusing on your department here. So, I unfortunately have not read the mayor's budget. It's on my to-do list this Saturday. So, what the mayor is recommending, is you okay with that? Or am I missing something? Okay, that's what I'm missing.
You're missing it.
Okay. You missed all?
Looking for that additional 240,000.
That's what I was not confusing. Thank you so much.
Yes, Commissioner Lang.
Yeah, so you receive revenue from O'Conne County, correct?
Yes.
Will you possibly turn to them for a portion of this?
Oh, I've, they've, they've, I've asked them for a proportional increase.
Okay.
And I, so what their process, I have not appeared in front of them in several years, and I contact someone in the Mr. Daniels office and ask if I need to appear, and they say, no, we're going to, it doesn't look like anyone is, is going to give you a hard time, so don't bother coming over.
Okay.
And that's what they told me this year.
So, they are agreeing to your request?
Yes. And so, it's, you know, but it's going to be like 9% of what I'm asking Clark County, because we, it goes by the caseloads.
Yeah.
And they pay a different proportion of the rent. They pay a proportion based on the population of the county. This is all written out in our governing statute, but for the salaries, it goes by just the case, broad case numbers.
Okay. All right. Any more questions?
And I'm sorry for, I didn't mean to mislead when I cited that. I just, that's the percentages that are listed on there, so.
Well, you were just saying, we're not getting that, and they are, so I just want to explain why, where that was coming from. Because we don't, we don't know your staffing, and we don't budget for your staffing.
I'm sorry?
I mean, we don't budget for your staffing levels.
So, you don't.
Right. But, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, John.
Mr. Donnelly, I, we do appreciate what you're doing in your department.
Well, thanks.
And if, if, if the, if you did lose qualified staff, it would be on us and not just the state. If we would be staffing, hopefully we'll work through that, okay?
Yeah. And if you ever get a call from a constituent that says, hey, my loved one is in the county jail, and their lawyer's not doing this, or they, we would like, please call me.
Thank you.
But thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Jesse?
I just wanted to ask if staff could provide us with, we voted on this a while back. I was trying to find in my notes when that was, but the salary study, the results of that salary study, and whatever that increase was for the attorney's offices that are under our staff review, could we get?
Sure.
Those figures, whether it was based on a percentage or a raw number, and we can kind of use that to verify whatever we might receive from Mr. Donnelly?
Yes.
Yeah, recall that there was a good summary that HR did at the time.
Okay. All right. All hearts clear?
Yeah.
Do we have to do a formal adjournment? Can we just go on?
Should we do a adjourn?
A adjourn.
Miniature Williams, any of these things that have been appearing with documents for tomorrow, are we getting printed copies?